All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 5:04. No, it's recording all of this conversation right now. We can go in non-public session at any point. I'm gonna open public input at 5:04 as well. I don't know if there's any public. You're good. Any point you want to talk to us, you let us know. January 10th, public meetings minute. I'm gonna make a motion to approve. I'm gonna open discussion, any discussion? Nope, they look good to me.
Yeah, sitting here.
Okay. So yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the January 10th, 2024, public meeting minutes as written.
One second.
Reason I can't see the rest of this document, which is not good. Do without a minute. So committee reports, do you want to start with policy committee?
Back up, just do it all in favor.
Oh, all in favor, I'm sorry, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Floppy, okay, committee reports, do you want to start with policy committee, Josh?
Yeah, I'll roll through these, so there's four.
Okay.
Two new, two revised. First one, limited English proficiency instruction. New policy for us, question that I have, I don't know if we have anybody that fits the bill here, meaning anybody that would have a LEP.
We do, we do.
Okay, all right, perfect, well.
But we, well, we were required to screen students based on their registration paperwork, and then based on the screening determine whether they are LEP status. But yeah, we always have students for whom we're screening for this.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and so the policy outlines the requirements that would tie in with the regulation. One item that stood out to me, and I was thinking this would probably be more applicable. If we didn't have anybody, it would be more of a future consideration. But there is a line in there that states that the teacher or teachers must have a certification for bilingual or multilingual education.
Yeah.
To support this.
Yeah, so that would be contracting with someone who holds that certification.
Okay, all right, perfect. All right, so the next policy, I just lost my page here, hang on. This one was revision. All right, so a significant revision of an existing policy. Before it was literally like half a page, now it's several pages. It speaks to home education instruction. And the way I might explain it is, yes, you have the ability to homeschool your child. Here's all of the requirements that you need to meet in order to go forth and homeschool your student. One of the details that I thought was interesting within the procedure is that there's a defined term called a participating agency. And this speaks to any parent that's homeschooling their children. And it states that you need to have a connection with the participating agency, which I would kind of think of as your base, your center for guidance, and also a group that's going to help provide an annual assessment on your student to understand, you know, how well they're doing with homeschool education. So there's a couple of different options that you have for a participating agency. You have the state, you also have the superintendent of the district where the student resides. And then also, if there's a private school, you can look, I'll call it the superintendent in that case, but the head of the private school could kind of serve as that participating agency. And then again, another requirement that I kind of touched on is the annual requirement or the annual assessment of the student's learning capabilities. So in essence, it's a lot of detail that lines up with the regulatory requirements. And then the next policy ties in with the homeschooling procedure or policy. This one just speaks to any homeschooled student and provides them with equal access to any, you know, public school district courses, programs, or activities. So you're providing that equal access for the home education student that they wouldn't have, obviously, in that space. The reason why this one is showing up as new is because it was originally tagged a recommended procedure. It's now one that's required by law. So the regulatory changes, you know, that speak to homeschool kind of pushed this one into more of a required policy as well. And then finally, the last one, a little bit of a change in topic here. Public reconsideration of library materials. There's a name change on this one. It used to be called public complaints about the curriculum or instructional materials. Some, I don't want to say minor edits, but call them somewhere in the middle in terms of significant edits made to this policy. One requirement of it is that there's a public reconsideration form, so that if anybody from the public is questioning a certain library material, they fill out that form, that's reviewed by Becky, and then there's a determination made as to whether or not that stays or goes.
Yep, Mrs. Eastwood has been proactively on top of this for a little while, probably close to two years. She's been anticipating these changes coming. So she has, I know, worked with other librarians in the forms and the review committee that would need to go in place should there be a reconsideration. So she's prepared.
Okay, perfect. And then finally, there's a couple of documents that are being removed. There's two, let's see, two reference documents that are being pulled out that they're no longer, they're no longer needed. Basically, a sample report and then a sample form. And then advanced course, so AP courses. There was a procedure that we had in place to support that, not applicable at the elementary level. So those three are more cleanup items that are coming up.
So we just need a motion to approve.
Yep, you can group them all together, you can do one at a time if you'd like.
When you say group them all together, Chris, can I like, should I just rattle off the first four policy changes? Have that be one part?
To approve those as written, yeah.
Okay.
And then do another motion to withdraw the two, because you don't have to take action on LEB since it doesn't apply to here.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve as drafted policy IHBBA, limited English proficiency instruction, policy IHBG, home education instruction, policy JJJ, access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home educated students, and then policy KEC, public reconsideration of library materials.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then I will make a motion to withdraw the following policies. KECR1, request for reconsideration of instructional slash library resources. Policy KECR2, report on reconsideration of library slash instructional materials. And then policy LEB, advanced coursework slash advanced placement courses.
I can second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Safety and security, we meet on the, I think it's the 22nd.
Are you able to go?
Yeah.
Are you able to go?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I was just gonna mention that we met with the Rich Kane and police chief and fire chief to review the security assessment that we had done with the homeland security, just to follow up on some of the action items that have been stated this fall, just to keep conversations going and making sure that, you know, we're keeping the action items moving. So it was a really productive conversation, I think.
Yeah, I think the partnership, you know, Becky asked from the meeting to bring everyone involved. We went through the whole document and looked at what we'd done and then some budget things that we'll look to do this summer based on the plan, because they will need to go into our budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was very productive, so thank you for setting that up.
Superintendent Valuation Committee?
We didn't meet this past month, we meet tomorrow, so I don't have any updates there. And, yeah, that's another next one.
Okay. General Correspondent?
Just want to comment on the Historical Society. So I did give you, I did follow up with Megan Rupnik from New Hampshire Historical Society. Asked the question, if we do this, what are we entitled? You know, what would be the impact if we said this? She said nothing, it's really naming recognition and anything. I said, so if we wanted to do renovations to our building, do we have to go through you? She said, no.
Okay.
You're entitled to your whole building. It's not a specific, like, historical society where it has to be these certain limitations. So she said it is naming rights and recognition only, and there's nothing there. If anything were to come down from it, they would have to give you, you know, notice of anything. So I said, okay, I'll bring that back to the board. So the way that it was presented, glad we got the information, but it wasn't as, you know, as involved as we thought.
Okay, great. That's what I figured, can't be the first school to have this. Thanks, Chris, that's helpful.
Yeah.
The Communication Community Engagement Committee surveys?
Yeah, the survey's done, and we meet on the 19th to discuss the findings.
Okay.
I'll have something in March, right? Yeah, March.
Yep.
To share on that.
And Community News Submission, I just.
I also felt, because you were like, I'm gonna text you, and I forgot that you said you were.
So, yeah.
I'll take.
Okay, we got the letter, we started editing it, and it just, stuff and I dismissed, not, we did not communicate.
Can I help? Can I help with that too?
It's already like, it's basically done, it just needs to be submitted. We should probably just submit it now for next time. Because every time it's just like a deadline thing.
Dad, I'm in a meeting, Jesus. Sorry.
No, you're fine. Business and Financialist Molly. All right, you're good.
All right, so including your Boardback is.
I used to do that all the time during COVID, and I'd be zooming to my dad if he was in this room.
So in your Boardback is a current year financial, we did relieve some expense. So typically, at the end of the year, we make a self-reversing entry for accruing the expenses for the summer, but it wasn't self-reversing, and our accountant found that. So we did have some support services being relieved, but we did have expenses in other areas. We noted them all here. Did anyone have any questions?
Holly, Becky and I were talking on Monday, we're in a really healthy spot, and we haven't seen this for some years, which is great. I'm just curious, and we came back, is there anything else that needs to be pulled out? Expenditures that has not been pulled out thus far, like the roof units or any other major things? Or are we really, to everything that we know?
Not that I don't trust your numbers, but I was like, really?
I mean, we, so we've encumbered everything, so a lot of the purchase orders are put in by the office here. So, I mean, unless there's some special transportation that we don't know about.
I think it was the rooftop unit, that was the big one that we were making sure. Because I know we did like half last year and like half this year, just making sure like.
So as long as the school's put in the purchase order for that.
Do you want to check out Kristen?
Yeah.
So as long as Kristen and Joe have worked together to put in the purchase order for that, because usually the purchase requisitions are generated at the school, they flow through us for approval.
I'm wondering, because that may be because when we did the original one, right before the end of last school year, it was for the whole amount, but the members had paid some now and then some later. But I don't know if they put a second one in once the July 1st came in.
So if you want to check with Kristen and Joe.
So there may be another like 50,000.
Possibly, if they haven't put in that. So what happens is, as soon as she puts that in, it will flow to you and Chris for approval, and then we'll see that on our end.
Okay.
So I mean, we go through and we look at everything that we can. So we take a look at any positions, any unfilled positions we knock down to the days remaining. I actually called over to Kristen the other day because there was something with Megan Leader in Noreen Hall, where there were some payments off positions somehow. So we fixed that, but we really dove into all the lines. I mean, everything that there's an open purchase order for, there would be an encumbrance. So if we're missing the encumbrance and we're missing the purchase order, so like under facilities and maintenance, that would be in the 2,600 section. So we don't, like, it would probably be under the repair and maintenance. We don't have.
Yeah, so we have 107 remaining, so that must be.
So they must need to put in the purchase order for that.
The other half of it.
I didn't see any other major.
I mean, we do go through and we encumber to the best of our ability what we think is remaining. Like with oil and electricity and all that, we do have encumbrances in there based off of what we've done to date.
So what you're anticipating, because I feel like there's a lot left on electricity too.
Electricity, the encumbrance, well, we, we've only.
That hasn't, like, that you haven't taken so.
Based off of the bills and when we received bills, we might have to put that a little bit higher, but keep in mind, this is also July 1 through to now. So I mean, we have a few months remaining. So I can't imagine us only, we've only spent 8,000 to date.
Yeah, I think, I mean, don't you think we'll have more?
I mean, I think we'll have more, but I mean, being this far into the year, this being a July 1 start, we still have almost 4,000 encumbered, which is half of that.
Yeah.
So I mean, if it has to go up, it's not going to go up huge amounts.
Okay, yeah, okay. I don't mean to be skeptical, it's a beautiful number, I just.
It's very big.
I mean, the fuel oil, it doesn't look like we have anything encumbered for that, but we've also spent, we've already overspent the budget, but I know you have a small tank, so that, we might need a little bit more there. I don't know how much is in the tank right now.
Well, they come every week to fill it because it's such a small tank.
It's inefficient.
Very. It's like a household tank.
So Molly, just to, we'll look at POs for repair and maintenance, but also special ed trust, those are the two big ones. I mean, not the special ed transportation, excuse me, that was like 44,000. So we just want to check and make sure we got all the POs on that.
So yeah.
Electrical and oil, we'll note to date, so I'm not concerned about those. But the two that are outlying, it might be POs, so.
But even the special ed transportation to date, and I mean, they're always.
It's gonna be very low.
Yeah, historically, they're always late in billing us. So even if they're late in billing us, we're over halfway through the year, and we've only spent 13,000, and we still have 16,000 encumbrance. I feel like that's a pretty good encumbrance for that.
Our usage is way down from last year, so.
I mean, I think we're in a super healthy spot because of some of the savings that we've had that we budgeted for last year, specifically the one-on-one nurse that we didn't need. But yeah, if there's things, I was actually gonna send out a request to all schools to have purchase orders in for the remainder of the year because being the April 1 accounting switchover, typically we say, please have all your purchase orders in before April vacation, which would be the mid to end of April. I'm just, we're not gonna require, because we know April 1's super early, but it would really super help us out if we could do the ordering early.
Then I would just ask the board if we are still really healthy in May to look at some things that we could do in regards to facilities that we took off in this budget. You know, some of it being security from the meeting we had, but also some like windows that should really be replaced or doors that we could put off to try to reduce this budget. So if we get to after that April meeting and we look in May, that would be something Becky and I can come with a priority list of what we look for for to finalize in our June meeting. Great, thank you.
Yeah, because of the, it's about 300,000, a third of that is the repair and maintenance.
Which is, I'm guessing the rooftop.
That's what we said.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We get it right.
And then also for the meeting tonight, I did bring you a pack that we're gonna hand out. I sent it to Allison earlier with some talking points. Justin includes that pie chart, because a lot of the questions we're getting asked is like, what's contractual? It's not, that's a really loaded question to answer. So I like to bring this pie chart to show what the breakdown is. So really, supplies and, supplies and equipment is really your discretionary, but even that, that's not all discretionary. And that's only 61,800 of your whole budget, so they'll be able to see the pie chart. Then I included the line-by-line budget.
Molly, so that's saying there's 61,000 out of the entire budget that has discretion.
And not even all of that is discretionary.
And that's just, that's just the section that would most likely be discretionary. Because like, like, things like substitutes, that's not required, but it is required because your teachers have the availability to take time off in your contract. So then you in turn need the substitutes.
Yeah.
So that's where I say it's a really loaded question.
Okay.
When you say what's contractual or not, because you wouldn't really think substitutes are contractual, but in a way they are.
Yeah, it's a good example too.
So that's why I typically draw it out like this, and it has the different categories. So then I included a line-by-line, then your warrant, the warrant language, and then in the back comes the default. And right before the default is your explanation of the difference between the default and the proposed that we talked about before. So that's all in there. Then usually in Kensington, Mike Schwarzer will ask what's the tax impact. So this is a little handy-dandy worksheet for you, Allison, I'll do it to you. But for your tax impact, it would be approximately 33 cents per thousand. So the way you calculate that is you take your change and then divide that by the total valuation of the town, and then you times that by 1,000 to get your tax impact per 1,000. So that would be the 33 cents right here. And then if you want to compare that to the other districts, that's how we compare.
You can also refer that right back.
So I can hold on, you can just tell, say Molly will answer, that's all.
I saw your face, and I was like, I don't see her, and that's why she does that.
And you can just point just, I don't know if we'll get the question, but just.
I'm a psychologist, numbers are really hard for me, so. I pass statistics, but.
But I think that was everything.
All right. My computer's going to sleep. I'm just like, I like you right now. Thanks, Molly. Principals Report.
I know we want to get ready. So under positive community culture, just highlighting our annual cultural passport. And those of you that have been in the building for a few years, you know that this is a beloved KES tradition. We are headed back to the Philippines this year. We traveled there maybe, I think before any of your children were in the building, so maybe seven or eight years ago, seven or eight years ago. So it's kind of fun to go back. And we had our opening ceremonies, which the pictures here are from our opening ceremonies, where we got to practice some tinkling. And so all month, students will go to PE and art and music and just be completely immersed in the Filipino culture, which is wonderful. We'll have our closing ceremonies at the end of February, and that's when the kids really get to come and showcase everything that they've learned through dance and song and art, and it's really a fun item. I'm not sure if you remember coming last year. Yeah, it's a really fun night, so. That is our community culture, meaningful learning. I was highlighting our first graders, again, I know I talked about them last month too. They're just, first graders just are, they just soak up everything. It's just maybe their age where they are. In one of our first classrooms, the students are learning a sign of the day in American Sign Language, and it's all related to their units of study. So right now, there's a lot of winter words that the kids are learning. And then in our other classroom, Ms. Valdella is one of our permanent mystery readers, I guess, and she shares a story with the class, and then they do more interactive art projects with it. So usually art, you know, we say to kids, don't touch, but these art projects are actually intended to be more textural so that students, all students can interact with the different textures of those art projects. So just trying to make learning more, I don't want to say hands-on for the kids, but just really, just give them learning in lots of different ways, so it's a lot of fun. And then under health and well-being, just, I know it kind of feels like spring is right around the corner, but we have had some true winter, and we've been talking to you, it's just reminding, like, you can still go outside and play even in the winter. So when it's 18 degrees or warmer, the kids are still heading outside for recess here. And so just a reminder of, you know, it's easy to just stay inside and, you know, watch TV, but you can always say, well, at school, if it's 18, you can, you have to go outside and play to just make sure the kids are going out and getting outside as much as possible. You know, because winter play is a little different than other play. The snow creates a different kind of play with different motor muscles and that sort of thing. So just really trying to continue to get kids outside to play during, during the winter seasons. And then there's an article that's linked to there, and this is also going out in Nurse Heather's smore, just about trying to find that balance of screen time with kids. We know it's an important part of their childhood, and this is, you know, they do a lot of fun things on there. But then how do we find that balance with outdoor activities too? So there's an article in there from Nurse Heather. And then I have one other, it's a request from the PTO, actually. They're requesting an exemption to policy KH solicitation in schools.
Sorry.
And they would like, for the purposes of a potential upcoming fundraiser in March, and this is something we actually have done before years ago, and I know Newfield School has done this as well. There's a local karate, it's called Karate International, and what they do is they'll offer a four-week sort of trial class here at school, after school. Parents would write checks directly to the PTO, so they don't actually take any money for running the four-week class. And it obviously exposes the kids to karate. And then should they choose if they wanted to continue, then parents would have the option to do that then privately with them. But it allows them the chance to try it for a few weeks to see if they like it, so.
So is it a business that's donating their time and their PTO is, it's a fundraiser for the PTO?
It's a fundraiser for our PTO, so parents write the check to Kensington PTO. It's $49 for four weeks. So it's just, they write the checks directly to the PTO.
Okay.
The policy states, which is on the second page, the last paragraph, it says exemption must be submitted 30 days prior to this. The PTO was targeting March because it seemed to be sort of that in-between season between basketball and before you're on the fields yet for baseball and lacrosse. So it seemed to be a logical month to target. And it just says, they can grant, you can grant exceptions. Examples include an activity conducted by a school club or parent organization for the purposes of raising funds. So this kind of fits exactly under those possible exemptions, but you would need to grant that.
And you said other schools have done this too, like Newfield?
Newfield has done it this year, yeah, correct.
And we did, we did it years ago.
We did it here. I don't remember. How many years ago?
Pre-COVID.
Yes.
Yeah, England, we're in England to England?
Oh.
No. There we go. I don't know. Yes, so we've done it here.
And in that time, the board did an exemption.
I actually don't recall.
So it was a different, it was them coming for a demonstration, where this is a fundraiser and.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a PTO thing the last time, right.
Sure.
It seems, it seems reasonable to me. I mean, I guess it's like a little bit of a commercial for their business, but there's the benefit to the students and the PTO.
Yeah. Is it, like, is there a certain age?
No, I believe it's open K to five.
K to five, okay. Okay, yeah, I mean, it seems reasonable to me.
Yeah. I think they were just trying to pull holes in it. I mean, I think the only thing it could do is start, you know, like a, well, they did it, so we'd like our opportunity now. So I think that's just something to put on our radar, but it's, yeah, I think it's good exposure.
Yeah, each one would require an exemption.
Right, exactly, yeah.
This isn't a blanket exemption.
Right.
And if it doesn't go well, then further exemptions don't need to be granted.
That's true, yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the exemption for the PTO.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Good, thank you, I will let them know.
Appreciate it.
Any new business?
We do not have any new business.
Any offices? Pupil-related not, or?
Do not have any.
Personnel? No, okay. And the SEL stuff that was in here is that?
From the last meeting.
Oh, I thought so, I was like, I feel like we looked at this already, okay.
I just asked that we put it in so you'd have it for the minutes, and then we post it to the agenda, so you'll start seeing that, anything that we bring to a meeting to the public.
That's why that, all of that stuff is in there.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. All right, I can make a motion to adjourn at 5:34.
Second?
All in favor, I'm like, I need a second. We're stuck here. All in favor, I. All in favor, aye, alright.
Great, good job.